Welcome to the August 26, 2025 Troutdale City Council Meeting. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll have Jesse Davidson lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Counselor Andrews.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor One.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Davidson.
Here.
Counselor E.
Here.
Here.
Um, Mike, welcome.
Thank you.
Steve, saw you this morning.
Yes.
Good to see you again. Is there an agenda update?
No agenda update.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Public Comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest related to matters which may or could not be forecited. Speakers shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of counsel. Counselor and Mayor should avoid any yet well-contracted responses, such as comments. So I open it. Public comment. Rich, come forward. Your name and the city you live in.
Rich Allen, Troutdale. So I had stated in last night's Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group, boy, that's a mouthful, that I felt like how Gresham's meeting or the meeting today went would not determine if we do a fire solution, but how we proceed with the fire solution. And from what I watched of their meeting today, it was of my opinion that they were open to talking with the three cities and they seemed reasonable. And so it would be my recommendation that we as Troutdale engage them in such a similar manner. And we probably also want to consider what we can bring to the table. That's all I had. I thought it was positive.
Mike? Anyone else to make public comment? Come forward. It's your name and the city you live in.
Troutdale. My name is Allen Nelson. I live in Troutdale and I live at just up the street at 425 Buxton. Twenty-seven years ago, when I walked home, the address was Buxton Avenue and all the paperwork. And one day I happened to walk across the street and see the street sign said Buxton Road. And then imagine my surprise later when I saw down at the northern terminus of Buxton it said South Buxton Road. And now since they put these new sidewalks in, some of the signs on the other side of the street are now saying South Buxton. And the ones on this side are still saying Buxton Road. So I just kind of, I've heard from other people that there's other streets around town that kind of the same situation. But I just, I know it's not a big, huge issue, but somebody make up their mind, which...
Well, curious, what was it? When you, what's the avenue?
It was Buxton, all the paperwork, it all said Buxton Avenue. And then also when I've had friends come to visit me from out of town, give them my address, and then I'll always get a call back saying, well, I who did it? But which is it? Is it Buxton Avenue or Buxton Road? So I said, well, it's insane. But now they're, you know, this sign is showing up saying that it's South Buxton. And it can get kind of sticky sometimes when you're filling out forms, you know, for the government or whatever, and you have that address on it. Later on, if you have a different, just a little thing like that, you've got to do all the following. Anyway, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We, I live on South Troutdale Road. I think South historic one to River Highway, it's designated South. Or on the east side, southeast, west side, southwest. But wow, avenue versus road, south. Well, Mike, this is one of those things, we just say, would you look into it? Find out who's at the city, maybe has something to do with it. I really don't.
Mr. Mayor, I think that Mike should speak to Travis Holton. I believe Public Works directs that. They have a formula to work and a grid to work everything out.
I'd just like, last thing just to say, I would like to see it just Buxton Road, myself. A suggestion. That's all I have to say and I'll leave quietly. Thank you.
Young Avenue.
All right. Anyone else care to address the counsel during public comment?
Hello. My name is Travis Souls. Many of you might remember me from last night. I am the station captain of your Troutdale Fire Station up on top of the hill here. I don't want to steal any of Ray's thunder, he's already probably spoke with you all.
Other way, Captain.
But just came from the City of Gresham's informative meeting where the council voted all in favor of supporting, pursuing a district. My hope is that this continues with the partnership of the four cities and District Ten working together. And that the offer from the last, though generous, is forgotten and we look at working together on how we can in a partnership together work on preserving our fire department here. Whether that is signing a two or three-year IGA with Gresham to give them time because it sounds like it'll take them a little bit longer, they're not as nimble as Troutdale and the other two cities. Or whether that's Troutdale and Fairview and Wood Village joining District Ten now and then letting Gresham come in as they're able to work through all of their stuff. I hope that that's the avenue that you all are pursuing, how those are the decisions is, do we go with this IGA or do we go with District Ten right away? Again, very encouraging to see everyone working together. I hope that continues. And if anyone has any questions at any time, I'll give my number and contact information out, please feel free to contact me. There was a comment last night that if District Ten were to grow and to take on the three cities, that Gresham would have the option of opening up the contract. And the exact same paragraph that says that if they chose to do that, they have to give District Ten or the new parties a year's notice. So you would be able to operate for a year while that was negotiated if anything was going to change. And I'm not here to negotiate for anybody, I'm just here to see everyone do what's best for our citizens and our businesses. But if that were the case, I would think they only really have an argument if you're adding a station and you're adding personnel and then they're giving you extra people. Because otherwise District Ten's already paid for Troutdale Station and 76, which are District Ten stations. Those are things to consider. Again, my phone is always on and I am always here as a resource for any of you. Please give me a call. I am more than happy to talk with you about it and give you the perspective from the boots on the ground. The people, me and I are here again, one of my lieutenants, we're here on our day off, on our vacation, away from our families, as all of you are, because we care about these communities. And we're trying to make sure that everyone has an inclination to make informed decisions. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks. What else? What else wish to address the counsel in public comment? How about out in Zoom, on Zoom, to address the city council? I think so. Public comment. The consent agenda, and I'll invite...
So 3.1 minutes, May 27, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting. June 10, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting. June 24, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting. June 26, 2025, City Council Special Meeting. July 8, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting.
Senator, please call a roll.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor E.
Yes.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Yes.
And Counselor White.
Yes.
Any of the consent agendas adopted, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 4.1. Public hearing. Resolution approving an interfund loan for property purchase of 921 South Buxton Road. Writing for a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is largely routine and from the standpoint of this is to implement the resolution that the council adopted back on July 8 that was reflected in the minutes that we just approved for the purchase of property that was previously the Troutdale Community Church. Resolution at that point authorized the purchase for us to go forward. That was accomplished on August 1, as was outlined during that presentation and the approval of the previous resolution. The intent was to borrow from the Parks SDC Fund to loan that money to the General Fund so as to not deplete the General Fund balance. The loan that's in the resolution is for the 1.5 million, as was described before, the 1.1 million purchase price plus 100,000 for the estimated renovation costs. Resolution tonight, rather than it being on the consent agenda, even though it's routine and straightforward, because we're modifying the budget as it was adopted, we're actually using two or three different sections of the local budget law in order to get this accomplished. And because of that, the local budget law requires a public hearing, which we need the necessary advertisement for. And so that's why it's on your regular agenda. But it is consistent with the previous explanation that we'd had, that we would borrow the funds and that it is a capital loan, which the local budget law allows internal or interfund loans for capital projects, capital assets, to be repaid over the life of the asset or 10 years, whichever is shorter. So this will be structured as a 10-year loan, budgeted in each of the upcoming fiscal year budgets as a loan payment from the General Fund back to Parks SDC Fund. And with that, I am happy to address any questions that the council may have before you have the public hearing.
Curious, what, how much do we have in that fund? If you have the existing loans, Park System Development Fund?
This will effectively deplete the Parks SDC Fund of liquid assets. It has multiple funds, multiple loans outstanding. There's already a $1.5 million loan to the General Fund, which we used in turn then to loan to the Urban Renewal Agency as part of our local match that was required for the funding of the trail and the two grants. There's another loan that's outstanding, it's escaping me at the moment, and then this one, there's going to be about under 110,000 of quote cash left in that fund once this is transferred. But other than the occasional master plan update or some consulting professional services over the past 17 years of my tenure, we've not had any actual expenditures from the Parks SDC Fund because it's really structured around the Parks Master Plan and only those projects that are eligible. So we don't, we don't expect that it's going to necessarily disadvantage the Parks SDC Fund. And as I mentioned in the staff report, the interest paid from the General Fund back to the Parks SDC Fund would be equal to the interest that the Parks SDC Fund would earn if the money was left where it's currently invested in the state pool. So it doesn't get disadvantaged in any way.
Feel pretty good about that 400,000 dollar number renovations?
Well, it's an early estimate, so it's like this. My expectation is it's going to be similar to most government projects. It's going to take longer and it's going to cost more. It's going to cost more simply because it's going to take longer. Not going to be, the only really early expenditure that we're going to be making is probably here in the next three weeks or so, we'll be able to get the roofs done on the buildings. If you have gone by and looked at them, they look like moss carpeting, they're well past their age, but sort of the rest of the renovations were, need to get through the space planning, then there's going to have to be specifications put together for the electrical upgrades and all of those things are going to take time. So I think it's going to be well past the first of the year before we're really getting busy on the internal. And I expect the costs will go up and inevitably, as we dig into things, we'll find something else that wasn't obvious from the external inspection. So I don't expect it to be 800,000 in renovations. There is currently about a $40,000 or so contingency in there. So it really sort of depends on what we run into. But I, you know, I'm not...
Okay, there was like a 20% overrun in our projections, correct?
No. Back on my table there, sorry, my numbers, but...
See any of the design ideas or... I brought that up because at Ray's retirement party, I was talking with a lot of our staff that works at the existing city hall, and said, I'm really going to miss how they kind of created storefront type of arrangement, you know? And they made that space their own and decorated depending on what season or holiday it was. So I might bring that idea, and if there's a way to do that, still kind of recreate what we had in town.
Some of the initial plans are very early, too formal to call them space plans, but scaling to make sure that there was enough square footage, half or building in a counter once you enter the main room, so you have something similar to like what you have in our current spot. The bigger difference is we don't really have the big bay windows like we do down here, so it's not going to be as easy to have Pepper's various holiday displays, a decoration that she does, quite as visible, but they'll, they'll be internal. So you'll just have to come into the counter, which I'm sure will be covered with garland and other items, so. Ray was generous and brought up the page that I left behind. You've got $46,000 of contingency as part of that number. One of the variables that we also don't have worked into specifically yet is going to be the ADA upgrade requirements. There's various formulas of what you have to do and which type of upgrade you have to do depending on what level. So that's still a little bit of the fuzzy part of it, so.
Any other questions? Well, I will, public hearing is required for this. And I'll just say that the council is considering a resolution approving an interfund loan for real estate property purchase. And so I will open the public hearing. We're going to be voting on this tonight. So I'll open a public hearing. Public comment, first, I'll start here in the room. Address the council on this matter. Is there anyone in, out in Zoom wishes to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And the matter is before us.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution approving an interfund loan for the real property purchase of 921 South Buxton Road, writing for a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Senator, would you call a roll?
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor E.
Yes.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Attorney.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Agenda Item 4.2, Resolution Setting the Fee for Commercial Law Enforcement Alarm Permits.
Mike, this is my first one to present here. This is basically your non-residential alarm fee for your commercial activities throughout the city, commercial and industrial, for any response from the county sheriff's department for an alarm that goes off. And the idea behind this is to get it in line with where the rates are across the county. And other than that, we have a few folks in the audience, Mike and Shannon, that are here, they can answer any questions the council might have any. Straightforward, they just...
You could do annual or biannual?
Annual.
Annual adjustment every year for that for alarm.
All right. Questions from the council?
Yeah, I had a quick question.
All right, hang on, Paul, let me, that was Paul, or was that Zach?
It's Counselor Andrews, yes, exactly.
Yes, Jesse, go ahead.
Yeah, it's all good. It's all good, yeah. I was reading that it was basically saying that we, there is a responsibility to provide kind of a breakdown fiscally of the increases at a regular interval. Do we have any of that information in terms of the costs actually rising significantly? Inflation aside, over the last, you know, 20 years or so that we've had?
Shannon's here.
If I can answer that.
Thank you.
The last time the commercial fees for alarm permits in the City of Toronto were raised were in 2011. Prior to that, it was $25 a year, now it is currently $50 a year. We're requesting it to be raised to 75 to be in line with Wood Village, City of Fairview, unincorporated Mollum County. Do you have an agenda on the, we brought before the City of Gresham, City Council, to align their commercial fees with the same base? Did that answer your question?
Um, I believe, I believe it was saying there was more of a actual like breakdown on the actual costs like that were being provided as part of like the agreement?
Yeah, so an annual expense and revenue report is provided, typically it's provided mid-delay September, and that's just because at the end of the fiscal year in July, it takes Mollum County Sheriff's Office Fiscal Unit about a month, month and a half before they can get me the raw numbers as far as our revenue and expenses.
Sure, exactly.
And then I pass that to the City of Troutdale.
Okay, yeah, perfect. That's exactly what I'm referencing. So what I'm asking, I guess, is if there is any kind of data that we have visible to us in this meeting showing the increases over that time and, I guess, justifying the increases that you're asking us to make.
So I don't have a, I don't have, I just have last year's fiscal, fiscal year breakdown as far as expenses, and I do have a printout of that that I can certainly leave, but I don't have like subsequent years beyond that, no.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, just as a comment, I've been in this role as the alarm coordinator for five and a half years, and the entirety of my duration in this position, the alarms unit has run in the red. We have not operated in the black for at least six years. And I don't know how far beyond that. The Mollum County Sheriff's Office has underwritten the program thus far, out of the General Fund for the Sheriff's Office. And so increasing this fee is trying to get the program back into the position that it was originally intended to be, where it is self-funded. So that's part of this. The way that the, the way that the municipal code for the City of Troutdale and every jurisdiction that we have an IGA with to provide alarm services, any overage that we take in as far as fees for alarm permits, any overage is distributed back to the cities that we service according to the percentage of permits that they hold. So if we do have an overage, it is always distributed back to the cities that we serve.
This is Zach again. So just to clarify though, in your entire history of working there, you've never had an overage, correct?
We have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Say in 11 and what?
Yeah, so the last fee schedule I was able to locate for the city that listed the commercial fees for the City of Troutdale, the previous coordinator had saved was from 2010. It listed the commercial fees as $25.
I believe that was set in 2006, right? The 25 was 2006, the 50 was 2011.
Yes.
Senator, okay, anyway, questions from the council? You might just wait in case someone in the public has a question. I will, public comment, we're going to be voting on this resolution to inverse. It's the fee schedule of commercial alarm fees. Anyone in the council to address the council on this matter? Anyone on Zoom to address the council on this matter? Comments, so thank you.
Thank you.
The matter is before us. I would invite a motion.
Oh, yeah. Unless Glenn asks Mike a clarifying question, so.
I'm just, so the alarm fee only goes to Mollum County, does Troutdale charge an alarm fee as well?
Since we aren't the ones responding, I know in my previous jurisdictions, we had an alarm fee for our responses to those, but in this situation, Mollum County is the responding agency, so they charge that.
So the answer is no, I guess.
A quick clarifying question. I might, I might seem silly on asking this. So you were saying earlier you operate in the red, so you guys are down money. Is that, am I hearing that? You haven't passed any overages onto the city as of now? Or you do and we just, it just is, we don't see it?
No, currently, I mean, obviously if we're operating in the red, there is no overage to pass on to the City of Troutdale. The fees that are essentially run the program are the annual fees, if we collect any late fees, things of that nature. Any false alarms are returned to the City of Troutdale on a quarterly basis, and that's... that's also detailed in the annual report that is given. Yeah.
Sorry, I was joking. You got any other questions? The matter is before us. I invite a motion.
I move that we, uh, propose a resolution setting the fee for commercial law enforcement alarm permits.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
No.
Counselor Allen? Counselor one?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
Counselor one?
No.
I believe the resolution passed. All right, well, thank you all. Uh, let's move on to four, item four point three, a resolution adopting the emergency operations plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Erica Palmer, Community Development Director, and Nick Ramstead, our Assistant Planner. Um, he's here tonight to, um, talk about the emergency operation plan that's before you and a resolution to adopt. He managed, um, the update of this process. Um, it was a, it had been fifteen years, um, previously that this plan was adopted, so we did a good, fresh update of this plan. So with that, I'm going to have Nick, um, kick us off here to talk about the EOP.
Uh, good evening, council. Um, I know a few of you, but I haven't met all of you. So Nick, good to meet you all finally. Uh, so what we're asking of you is for a motion to adopt the update of the EOP. Uh, just some background for what we're talking about. Twenty-ten, uh, we adopted the Troutdale's Emergency Operation Plan, Resolution number twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-three, uh, Resolution number twenty-five ninety-one, approved an IGA between the city of Portland and the cities of Troutdale, Fairview, and Wood Village. Uh, so in this case, the city of Portland is acting as grant administrator, uh, through the Department of Homeland Security, Urban Area Security Initiative, uh, and on behalf of the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. Uh, and the city of Troutdale administered and coordinated on behalf of, uh, Wood Village and Fairview. Uh, how the grant was, uh, obtained, Councilor Glance and Fairview Councilor Lawton originally applied for the grant during their participation in the RVPU elected officials. Uh, and last year, May fifteenth, the city of Troutdale entered into an agreement with StanTech to update all three cities' emergency operation plans, and tonight, the EOP is before you. Uh, so a brief overview of what this is. It's an internal document. It's not public facing. Uh, it establishes the overall authority of emergency management within the city by providing procedures and responsibilities for responding to and recovering from emergencies. So EOPs are composed of two parts. Uh, one's the basic plan and one is functional annexes. Together, they serve as a framework for approaching emergency management activities, uh, like NINs, so FEMA's, like National Incident Management System, and emergency support functions. We'll get just barely into weeds, but we'll get out so soon, so don't worry. So the basic plan, that's the first document, uh, establishes the overall authority of emergency management. It introduces the concepts of the ICS, describes the systems and infrastructure needed to maintain emergency preparedness, and assigns emergency management responsibilities amongst city departments and partners. So you'll see listed in the table of contents, all the chapters of the basic plan. So, uh, it goes through community risk and resilience, emergency management organization, incident management, operational coordination, emergency operations center management, concept of operations, and programs of statement. And the second big part of it is functional annexes. Uh, so the basic plan is supplemented by four functional annexes that provide additional details specific to the range of functions that may need to be performed during an emergency or disaster. Each functional annex represents groupings of related emergency support functions, or ESFs, or the structural groupings for inter-agency support during response activities. This EOP's ESFs are aligned to those used by Mollum County. We refer to this described in this table. So our four main functional annexes, management services, helping unit services, emergency services, and infrastructure services. A little timeline of what this project looked like. September twenty-two forty-four, we had a kickoff meeting. Uh, officially, it's called the Three Cities Preparedness Project. And over the course of several months, staff work, uh, consultants StanTech provide city-specific insight and information to help with the update. And in April of this year, the city engaged in multiple rounds of review before receiving the final version of EOP. So why are we updating? What's the need? Uh, our last EOP was adopted fifteen years ago, and a lot changes in fifteen years. So, for example, uh, to improve coordination of resources, personnel during emergencies, uh, which makes a city more resilient and better able to protect life, property, and environments, refine roles and responsibilities of departments and agency partners, ensure they're more efficient and coordinated spots as made in the event of an emergency. And agreements and contracts can change over time. So understanding the current and available resources, efficient allocations can be made during an emergency, as the hazard that our community, uh, simply city inventory changes, improving staff training in emergency service operations. Uh, kind of a, a general guideline is EOPs should be formally reviewed every two to five years. So if you're a little behind on that. That's all I got. Uh, if you guys have any questions, happy to attempt to answer them.
Yeah, it's Nick. Um, I was involved in two thousand and ten when we did this, and I was actually trained, um, for ICS overview for, as I did with some elected officials. And, um, the takeaway then was, um, uh, if, like, if we have the big earthquake, one's come, and we have to be ready to help yourself. And, um, basically what I, um, figured out is like, if you have camping here, and, um, supply of food and survival and water and things like that, then that's probably what we'll do. So, um, I know that we don't have to adopt, uh, this plan. Um, what I'm thinking, cause, I mean, it, it was almost impossible to read and comprehend this document. I tried, but, um, it made very little sense. So I'm reluctant to adopt something. I'm worried about this could possibly affect how, uh, those code might, um, change or, um, regulations regarding private property or, or, uh, maybe hazard, stuff like that. So is there a way, just adopt, adopt this as a reference? I'm going to want to see, like, a red line copy from the, from the old one. I, I can't do it, but something like this without, without, you know, to follow it.
Um, I guess to answer that, it is intended, uh, as an internal document for staff. So it helps guide how, uh, I guess for the sake of Troutdale, public works typically respond to emergencies. It helps them establish who would be the one in charge, uh, where the, like, emergency command would be. Uh, so it's kind of, it outlines a lot of basic framework, um, ideas for responding to emergencies. It helps us better interact with the county and fire departments when they interact with us for emergencies. Uh, so here, can I interrupt a little bit? This is just a resolution, right? It's not an ordinance.
Uh, correct. And then as a resolution, in comparison to the emergency management plan that we had previously, what gives the Cliff Notes versions of what were updated along the pathway here to keep this management plan up to date?
Um, I, I believe it's mainly for, uh, my current agreements, uh, with, for example, all of our, the majority of our emergency services are not done through Troutdale. We have to do, uh, it was...
So everything's serviced as providers then?
Yeah, so everything's current, essentially. There weren't necessarily large content changes. Uh, it was a bit improved and things like that.
First of all, it's important to note that, um, this was a free update to our emergency operation plan. Sandy Glance, who we all know, was instrumental in getting a grant on the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization through the feds. And so this plan update was paid for a hundred percent. All three cities got one of their own on this. Um, second of all, uh, nothing in the plan. You know, it's always a good question, Counselor White, you're very right. We're always concerned about, is somebody else telling us what we should do? Uh, and this plan, it does nothing about anything to a zoning or building or anything at all. It's simply, as Nick, uh, said so well, it's simply an internal document for our people to be able to know what we're supposed to do in any given circumstance. And so it directs staff, this is who you coordinate with. Um, so it, it doesn't impact anything other than the staff now knows what will happen, because the worst thing that could happen in an emergency is nobody knows what to do. Who to call? How do we figure this out? And, uh, the second thing is, yes, you're right, a red line version would have been really helpful, I understand that. However, it's been so long since we did the plan. This is a complete rebuild, a complete rebuild. A red line version would confuse you more. Um, and, you know, everything's different. We don't have a Troutdale Police Department anymore. Um, the, uh, layout of land is different because of the different hazards. All the people on staff are different, so names tend to be changed, who to call, what position, and organize things like that. So this is really, it's a nice, fully updated plan. It doesn't have a lot of relationship to the prior plan either than, except that it, in theory, does the exact same thing. And so, um, yeah, we are always very cautious, Counselor White, about making sure that we don't bring anything to the council, um, that's going to impact, um, the quality of living and the life and the decisions Troutdale citizens make, because we know the council's always been very cautious of that. And so we don't believe this plan will do anything to impact any of the other things. And, um, it's just a blessing that we're able to get this done. As I always say with other people's money, we're blessed not to have those kind of emergencies, uh, but it's nice to have this, for the future. Because the other thing too is I get worried, if you saw me on KATU, KATU News today, um, maybe you don't want to see me with us. But, uh, Thousand Acres and that cleanup, and that biggest thing I've focused out there is that they've had a couple fires out there. We don't want to see two thousand and seventeen happen again. Two thousand and seventeen happens again, this is when this plan comes into effect. We don't really talk to a lot of organizations. So, um, it, it's, great questions, but it's a great plan that really updates us to two thousand and twenty-five, and it's the same as the other two cities, you know, the same format. So all three cities are operating under the same kind of format. So that was nice to get it all done that way. Anyway, it's kind of one of those legacy things that I worked on. I felt I had to jump up here and just give you a little bit more time. So, what about that?
Good, thank you. When I started reading about hazard mitigation and, you know, I want to mitigate for everything. So, uh, no.
Good. Any other questions from the council?
Questions. I just want to say thanks for working on this task. I've worked on, is that my job? And it's really important to have the right information there for people to access that need it, um, and have it be up to date. And hopefully, we can get this on some sort of scheduled document, docket, to keep updated as people change, um, names change, um, how important that is to, emergency does happen. Uh, we had a situation where there was a fire, the fire is in Salem. Uh, we had to actually help to evacuate the Salem hospital. Uh, so who's going to do what and when and where and how we coordinate that and how those agencies are going to coordinate is very important to have it be up to date.
I just wanted to thank Sandy Glance for her work on this, and Counselor Lawton. I called Sandy today to ask her about it, and she said she was primarily involved in getting financing. It's huge. I didn't, I didn't know any of that, so.
We, we all thank, uh, Counselor Sandy Glance for, uh, allowing us to do this without having to pay for it. I mean, it's just...
Thank you, thank you.
I will invite public comment.
Well, if I may, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, appreciate it. So I, yeah, I'm very appreciative to, uh, former Counselor Sandy Glance and, uh, Fairview Councilor for putting this together. This is great. Um, I understand that there is no, you know, uh, negative impact, uh, at all perceived to any way of us doing things internally, uh, with this plan. And on that note, I want to know if there's any, uh, potential positive impacts of changes, uh, when it comes to community involvement. Um, you guys have done a great job, I think, rolling out a lot of disaster preparedness courses available to the public that I've been to. Um, you've also, uh, you know, worked with the, um, neighborhoods on, uh, like, fire preparedness, um, some of my fellow counselors and I have been to. Um, so that's, that's all terrific, and I think you guys are doing wonderfully there. Was wondering if this brought to light any potential gaps in that, if we're going to be increasing that in any amount for any other kind of, like, flooding or, you know, what have you, as, as, as an example, as an aside. Um, but we wanted to throw that out there and see if that was, uh, something that you guys had, had considered. Being, being the fact that it says in the, like, the assumptions section, um, you know, all community members share the primary responsibility for minimizing the impact of disasters through personal preparedness, and there's a lot of focus on that. So I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, so last year, the city, actually, the three cities held a, um, disaster, a preparedness program for community members to attend. And those that attended got a free emergency preparedness bag, um, as a toolkit that they could use in response if, if an emergency ever occurred. So we tend to do those workshops, um, every now and again to make sure that, you know, people are prepared for emergencies. Uh, the, the fire hazard mitigation work that we've done this year also came, also came through, uh, from another grant that we got from the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office. And we'll, you know, try to keep, um, having, um, community conversations around, um, wildfire preparedness. That grant wraps up later next year.
Great, I'm happy to hear that. Um, yeah, it, so there doesn't seem to be any, like, other, uh, I guess, uh, opportunities for additional resources for community in terms of any other disaster. We feel like we got our bases pretty much well-covered based on this?
We do. Um, and I just want to emphasize that when different programs come up for the community in regards to disaster preparedness, we'll, we'll have those programs and, um, have that education for community members.
All right, cool. I really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
I have a question. Just, just a lot. I was trying to... Is there a, I don't recall it, just like, has this where, so here's more trouble built as, but here's a contact. It's like a, like a tree out, how it all is supposed to work during emergencies?
It's tricky to give, like, a single table or graphic as the answer, since it's so dependent on what happens. Uh, that's why the document is often vague and long. It's really hard to pinpoint what could happen, and I think the intention of it is to be very high-level and, and speak broadly about, uh, responsibilities and roles, so it can fit into any sort of scenario.
So to give you an example, Counselor, when I was in Huth County, we had the Great Coastal Gale of two thousand and seven, and it wiped out all the power, water, sewer systems for the, all the cities within the county for, like, three to four weeks. And during that time, all we had was, like, one radio relay to hit, and we had to use ham radios to get out signals. And we had an old emergency operations management plan that had...
And we had an old emergency operations management plan that had almost zero guidance. And we got in the EOC and we tried to get everything going, but we relied on that plan, on who our calls were to, like notifying the Army Corps of Engineers on what our needs were going to be, tents, generators, water supplies, all the needs that we were going to need for our community out on the coast until we could get supplies back in. Couldn't even get through the highways because trees were down. Power crews couldn't get to us. We were basically isolated on an island on the coast for, for about two weeks before we could get supplies in. But we had the Coast Guard helicoptering in supplies and it was our emergency operations plan that we fell back on to notify people of what our needs were. And it was that data that got us through. So having one of these plans is definitely critical, even if they are antiquated, but even if it's vague, it at least gives you a baseline for where you need to go and what to do. It might not give you the exact answer you're looking for, but it does give you a general direction.
Questions? I'm sure we all read it thoroughly.
I did, but you have another hand up from Sandy.
Sandy, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Are you in public comment now?
No, we are now.
Okay. I did have a chance to look through it and I think it's great. And just as a point of reference, the 2010 emergency plan was 476 pages and that was in 2010. So this is actually a pretty reasonably sized emergency plan. I was really glad to see all the prominence that Public Works has in this one. One of the things I learned in working with the RDPO is that in the event of a catastrophe like a Cascadia event, my initial thought going into it was, well, the most important thing is water and it's not, the most important things are roads. If you don't have ways to get help to people, everything else doesn't really matter. I have a couple of quick questions. I didn't see anything in there about nets. And I think of places like east of the Sandy River where they can sometimes be isolated and it seems like that would really be helpful over there and in some of the neighborhoods around here. Not that just that we have, you know, individual emergency supplies, but we have neighborhood emergency teams. I thought that could be in there someplace and maybe I missed it. And I thought, I noticed one of the cons was keeping this updated. I'm wondering if we could have a checklist of things to update. You know, is your police and fire still the same, stuff like that? And then my third question was, are the, did the tabletop exercises happen or are they still planning to happen? And then the fourth one was just checking that one of the goals and, or one of the reasons we got this grant was to be able to have an emergency plan that we could share with other small cities so that it wouldn't cost them as much, they'd have a format to use and reuse.
Comments on that?
So the, on your most recent said question, we did have the tabletop. It was all done via, and the STAN Tech ran us through a couple of different scenarios. And we just went through it one by one, kind of learning how much we rely on our partnerships and other organizations out there. And I couldn't recall anything about nets. I can dig around and get back to you, shoot you an email. And you had something sandwiched in between those items that I'm forgetting.
Some kind of, if the consultants could work with us to give us like a checklist of things to update, you know, kind of a general format.
They didn't give us a checklist, but there are, there's a whole chapter on how to sustain and like update. So we can definitely make something more like condensed and action oriented.
Yeah, that and, yeah, the nets was the only thing I saw as a whole. Thanks.
Thank you again. If we're in public comments, considering a resolution adopting the 2025 Emergency Operations Plan, we're voting on it tonight. Are there any other public comments? I see Zach, you have your hands full. How about here in the council chambers? Do we have any public comment on the matter of resolution adopting 25 Emergency Operations? All right. Other questions from the council, comments? Well, the matters before us.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the Emergency Operations Plan.
And just to be clear, it says, Section 1 of the, the resolution as attached, attached as Attachment A, I believe, and just let me confirm, Rick, that Attachment A is the rest of our packet.
Correct. It's the plan document.
Yep. Have a second? Attention Sarah, call it.
Council Davidson?
Yes.
Council Zimi?
Yes.
Council Andrews?
Yes.
Council Allen?
Yes.
Council Juan?
Yes.
Mary Ellen?
Yes.
Council Mike?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your presentation, thank you. And we'll move on to agenda item 5.1, an update on the Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park Works.
Mr. Young was nice enough to go out and snap some pictures and put together a wonderful PowerPoint for us today, so I'm going to ask him to give us an update on where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Councilor White, there we go. Almost 20 years ago, we presented a vision for this property out here to our citizens who approved the urban renewal area. And for 20 years, they've been waiting for this wonderful public amenity. And it is exciting to see it's almost ready for them, the park that's being built in here. It is also, it's interesting to remember that this is the largest public infrastructure project we've done in 15 years since this building was built. We're slightly over $5 million overdone. And for those who haven't been out there, and all of you will have been out there when we're done here in a minute, that it is fascinating to go out there and look at it in 3D when all we've seen is plans and pictures up until now. So Mike and I went out and walked the length of it yesterday and we thought it would be a great idea to just give you a little quick PowerPoint, walking out and walking back. We have the schedule also, yesterday or today, Erica got the updated schedule on them, their job schedule. And right now, almost all of it should be done by the end of September. And so as you walk through, you can see a lot of stuff undone, but a lot of stuff that's undone is more like, you know, Christmas tree stuff, just kind of all the basic infrastructure is now done. Now it's just putting all the cool stuff as we'll walk through this. And then everything, they shouldn't be offsite and closed up by the end of October, they said. So it's kind of cool to see that coming. So here we are, we are going to be walking north from the depot. So this is leaving the depot right now, walking down toward underneath the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge. And so we'll keep walking down toward the bridge. And now we're getting to where the bridge, under the bridge. As you may recall, UP and I'll say NISIN were wonderful to give us an easement to go underneath their bridge. But part of the deal was, we had to build a pathway that was not only a pathway, but was a roadway, big enough for 20,000 pound trucks that they owned to come service their own bridge. And we smiled and said, yes, we will. So that's why those I-beams, as Mike and I looked at it, those I-beams are pretty beefy. They're just finishing up the last couple I-beams there, as you can see, they weren't on site, so they must have had to tweak up to get the order done. So we keep walking down around the corner here. This is where it starts curving down and around underneath their bridge. It's, you can see it's elevated. Also, by the time it's done, directly not attached to their bridge, you can't touch their bridge, but with poles and stuff, will be a cover, a steel cage cover over the pathways that goes under, so rocks and debris and stuff that when the train goes by won't fall on people's heads. So when it's all done, you'll have screens along the side, which you'll see a couple in a minute here, and you'll have a cage over the top. So we keep walking here underneath the bridge and we're curving back underneath. You can see they're even starting to put the side railings up that are on the left. I know for those of you on Zoom can't see my red dot here, but you can see right there is where some of the side members are. And you can see these cross members, that's what this thing is there for, they're starting to cut and weld them in. When Mike and I were there, the welders were there working on it. And when we walked a little bit on top of those I-beams, they gave us a dirty look, but they didn't stop us. I knew Mike was there to save me if I failed. So here we're coming out of it, you can see the hand railings are there and it's kind of cool, those are the lights. We must have 25, 30 of those lights. So it'll, it'll be a cool place on a warm summer evening to walk down there along the river. It's going to be really nice. So coming up out of here, we are coming up that path and then you kind of look up where the path comes up here. If you kind of see on the right there, that all that dirt hillside there, as part of the plan, that's going to be like a little meadow, a little grass meadow, it's got a watering system in there, so it'll be a nice grass field between the trail and the river for people to just relax and sit in a nice little grassy area. So then we kind of cruise up to the flat, level top and then you're looking up north toward the I-4 bridge. They already, obviously you can tell they paved the whole trail, which is great that that paving is done. Then if you, I'm going to turn to the left here, if you turn around to the left where you just looked up, that's the first of three play areas. The player is going to have rocks for kids to climb on, that middle section is going to have a little slide on it for kids. So they're doing a cool little play area for people to come out there and play on in that area. So that's kind of looking back at the area. Now we go back north again, moving our way up along the river there, as you can see there to the right, all the vegetation they took down on the right, that was part of the plan, was to get the non-invasive species, invasive species out of there, the non-native species out of there and restore that riverbank, which is kind of the last things they do when they get done with the trail. You can see all the light poles all the way along there. We get our way on up here and this is the observation deck that is built, it kind of sticks out almost to the edge of the water looking over on top of it. It's a cool old place, as you can see, the nice design is it looks just like the Columbia River Highway, Shore Columbia River Highway. That was kind of the idea, those arches that you see all up and down the gorge. And they've done a wonderful job with bringing in that motif that we're so well known for here in Tradale. Then from there, you keep walking north again, oh, this is in the lookout, this is looking back down south. I figured this is what people will see when they get there, looking down, over Lewis and Clark Park across the way there, that's looking that way. And then we keep walking to the north from there and we're walking back up that gravelly area, they are going to have rumble strips there. I didn't know it was in the plans, but every, about 50 feet, there's a stretch there that, I think it's going to be like the sidewalk stuff for handicap ramps where they have those yellow balls that you get to. It's that way for people to make sure they're not going too fast and crazy on the trail. Going farther north again, that is the second play area, that is just getting ready to be poured cement, so there'll be another play area there for kids to stop and play in. Continuing northward toward 84, there's where it ends, to the right goes underneath the 84 bridge on the pathway that goes up to Harlow and the Chuck Chuck Trail. The path straight ahead to the left goes over to the mall and then a little bit further on the curve will then hit the trail pathway that goes across the 84 bridge over the Sandy River. So this is kind of the junction where you get the three different places you can head off to at the end of the trail. Then Mike and I turned around and we started back the other direction. So there again is the third of the play areas, it's all framed in, ready to go, working our way back toward the observation deck with all the light poles up, ready to go, going past the observation deck, again, the trail looking southward, working our way down to where the welders are and where that other first play area is there. Then you look around the corners, you're coming back down, I mean, that's a cool place on a bike just to be rolling down into there, underneath there, nice wide pathway underneath there, getting through. And this is coming back up toward the depot. And then the last slide here is, that's where we're going to finish off. I think I've explained it most of it before, but we already have 100% design on the complete bike hub design around the bike hub. That's going to be our next big project to finish the bike hub around there. It's about a $2.5 million project and of course, we will be working with Metro over the next five years, Mike will, to get other people's money. But we are the last jurisdiction in the gorge, I mean, Hood River has one, Cassie Locks has one, Wood Village and Ferb, we've already finished their bike hubs. And this is already designed as a bike hub with a parking lot behind the building. And we're working on maybe getting the parking lot done sooner than later. So we'll have a good place to park back there, but the trail will terminate us right there in downtown. It was really kind of cool because when Mike and I were walking down there, there's a bicyclist who came down the pathway up by the observation area and we talked to him, madam, name's Jim, he's lived at Tradale for how long? 20 years or something, he loves riding his bike around. And he goes, does this go to downtown? He didn't know what was happening. We had to explain to them, well, on your bike, you're not going to be able to get to downtown. But we told him if you walked it like Mike and I did, you'd be able to get around. But he just couldn't say enough excitement he had for having this trail go from downtown, paved all the way through to the Chuck Chuck Trail, up to the levee and all the way around to the 40 Mile Loop. This is really the last paved portion of the 40 Mile Loop around Portland for our citizens to catch on to. So it's kind of cool to get it all done. And right now, we're looking to, we're just a month away from it being 95% done and then two months away from it being completely done. And I'm just really excited, I know all of you are ribbon cutting and we've talked about working with Coff construction to make sure we kind of know when's the good time to do the ribbon cutting. So I know Mike will be reaching out and scheduling a wonderful party, I know you will, Mike. Or at least Marley and Erica and Kimberly will organize a party and he'll take credit for it, which is, you know, which is fine. Anyway, any questions on where things are at with the trail itself? I didn't want to spend any time on the development, we're just finishing up the E&amp;A right now, so we haven't started real negotiations on development out there yet. But the trail is what's exciting right now because it is almost done. And regardless of what happens on development, citizens are going to have a beautiful park and trail out there regardless of that river. So that's kind of cool. So anyway, that's all I got.
Thanks. Questions?
And anybody wants a tour? Love to give you a physical tour, probably wait about two weeks, they are getting the decking in, in the next two weeks to deck the bridge. So probably in two weeks, it'll be a better chance to check it out because then you can walk on nice surfaces all the way around.
It's going to be like a cage.
Yes. It'll be a cage underneath the railroad bridge so that no trains fall off and kill you. Whatever. So, yeah. So, and we will.
Pictures that you took, but noticing the graffiti. I know it's on the railroad, it's pretty common these days, but if there's any way we could have a ribbon cutting, if we could do something about that.
That's one of my projects while I'm still reporting to Mike over here, I have the connections, I'll introduce them to him about that. I did talk to our connection at the railroad who is in touch with the people that make the charge. The railroad is, as you will know, is very picky about anybody who goes on or near or touches their structures. And so to get them, ODOT, I mean, give you an example, ODOT underneath the 84 bridge, that tunnel that kind of goes underneath 84 bridge, they came out, looked at what goes on with graffiti and they told us the exact colors to use, the paint they used and they said, go ahead, just use these colors. They didn't care because they were struggling with all the graffiti in Portland on their facilities. The railroad isn't quite as willing to let us do stuff, but it's definitely, we'd love to reach out and get that bridge on both sides at least cleaned up before we do our grand opening. It's a great suggestion, Councilor White. I will put that on my list of things to do and try to get that done for us.
Thanks, Ray. Questions, comments? I'm voting on anything, so I don't think I'll bother the poll. We're on to staff communications.
Just started, so it's been nice, get a couple days under my belt and meet everybody. But there's the trauma intervention program. We have a table for 10 on September 27th, Saturday. We have Councilor Allen and Mr. Young have volunteered to spearhead filling that table and reaching out to you all to find out who wants to sign up for that. We're, we have the first Friday event coming up next Friday in September here, last one of the season, I believe. And then finally, we're closed on Monday for a whole, reminder, shout out. Reminder, shout out.
All of them to council communicator. Just me?
I just had a citizen come up and ask about a public library at Sunrise Park. There used to be one there a couple years ago. Well, it turned off at one point, and it's eight months ago, it was just removed. They're interested in funding it themselves to build them. They're asking something about like a that's non-perishable in a little community box in front of the park. He asked me what was all involved with that, and I said I have no idea about it.
Well, parks. Consider. Saying a library like a private-
Those little boxes with doors, people put books that they've read. The Wilma Park has one.
Uh, there's, there's some on the trail. Sweet Prior neighborhood trails. Have to admit, I'm more keen on the library than on the food. That's, perhaps it doesn't seem like a good idea. That's just my, but I'd be willing to let. So how that, how the mechanics of that would be, uh, approach someone, chair, I don't know. I don't think we need to have a resolution directing that, or something, just.
And then I just wanted to welcome the manager, Mike Abord. Welcome. Let's be back from our summer break. Welcome. Summer break was a long one. On the summer break.
Congratulations.
My five-year-old son is now a grandpa. Hard to wrap my mind.
Yeah, really.
He's young. She's twenty-two. Yeah. She's a little, seven-pound boy. Fully changing, staying at our house right now.
All right, anything else? To Zach.
Well, congratulations to your family, John, that's really exciting and very happy for you guys. And glad to have you aboard, Mike. I'm, you know, wish I could be there in person, but rain check on that for sure. And it's good to see you guys. Very appreciative of all of you and the time spent, glad to be back, and that's all I got, thank you.
Glad to be back and get back into routine. Welcome, Mike. Regarding tip, if you can let Mike know if you're gonna go that way. That right now, so then you know how many are going?
That's September twenty-seventh?
Yes. And it's at, um-
The casino by Ridgefield?
It's a casino.
I don't want to give myself away here, but. Uh, it's, uh, while I, while we're away, you know, there's things that still happen and go on and have Mike board and getting your feet under ya and getting everything, so. Ask for a new job, but we appreciate that you're here and you have small shoes, but big.
Just eight, that's not a problem.
I think while we were away, you know, there's been a lot of conversation around our fire service. And staff has been busy at work, having continued conversations. Evolved on the safety working group, we had a meeting last night that was very productive. We were all generally on the same page, I think. One of the things we were waiting for, or kind of needed here was Gresham's response to their desire to move towards a fire district. They had a work session today that I felt like had a lot of positive movement towards that. They had good discussions and good questions. Of course, they're, I feel like a little behind us in, just in terms of what questions they're asking and the information that they're getting. We might feel we already have our answers to very important cog in this wheel of what we, what we do. And so I was encouraged by their conversations that they had. And I think that my big takeaway last night is that we really need to be collaborative with all of the cities on the same page. And that's not necessarily because it benefits us specifically, but our community as a whole, we are a technic community, and it's important that we make cause and have good collaborative communication. And I know that the people involved on that group are all, um, hard for everybody in Trauddale. Make sure that we get the best service, or fire service as possible in our, within our means, and are making the best decisions we possibly can. Obviously, we'll send this to the council as a whole, but I was really encouraged by that conversation that they had today. And excited for ongoing talks that we're gonna have with the cities. And it was a busy summer, but good. They aren't listening, so thank God my kids are back in school. So we can get back to some semblance of, uh, of some normalcy and routine, so.
Right. First of all, I can't resist commenting on Ed Trunkie. Either that's some sort of background screen, or he's sitting in some tropical paradise. Ed, where, where are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? I, I am sitting on the big island of Hawaii with, taking care of my grandson for my son and his wife. We volunteered because they needed a break and somebody had to come here with them.
Tough, tough, good for you. That's, that's great. I, uh-
But also, welcome, Mike.
No, okay, sure. And I met with the sheriff and her, Morrissey O'Donnell and her assistant. Sheriff here this morning, and I had a chance to introduce them to Mike and vice versa. And that was, it was just a chat about where to stand. Sheriff has been incredibly flexible and generous to Trauddale, and I acknowledge that. On the fire district, I was in the meeting yesterday. We're all, we're all basically on the same page. We'd like to have four cities, including Gresham, talk. I, and I agree with Rich Allen's comment that I watched the work session, and the Gresham Council all expressed an interest in exploring a fire district. And that's all good. And it would be the best possible solution, I think it would. I think it would be best in the long run if we could do that, so I'm all for it. However, Captain Travis Sewell, I think is his name, Station Seventy-Five mentioned, and I reviewed the agreement between Gresham and Fire District Ten. There is no, there's nothing in there about one year, even one year wouldn't be enough. And you're not following me. Fire District Ten were to include Trauddale, Wood Village, and Fairview, there was a next additional territory, throws out the agreement, financial arrangements between Fire District Ten and Gresham. Gresham could reset the amount being charged to the fire district if we somehow ended up in the fire district. So that isn't a panacea, we just need to be careful. And if we're going to talk about all four cities getting together, which I'm all in favor of, we need to pin down an agreement with Gresham that they aren't going to, basically do what they did in twenty-four, twenty-five. Or in twenty-twenty-five, they agreed to an extension, but only because we were planning, we, we're Trauddale and Wood Village, planning to leave. We're under contract with Gresham. We absolutely have to have Gresham's, uh, some sort of binding agreement that if they want us to stay as contract cities for a couple more years, that they are going to, we have to agree on essentially the terms of that extension. And we can't just throw away the rest of the year talking. Gresham, you listen to all the counselors, we're all in favor of studying it. In favor of the concept, in favor of the idea, but they weren't ready to move. We in Trauddale have to get fire service for our citizens by the end of June next year. And that's true of Wood Village and Fairview. So we, we need answers right away. So if we're going to pursue that, which I favor, I encourage us getting together, not waiting till October when they're gonna have another work session. But we need to get started, find out if Gresham is really on board. I, I don't know how to, I'm gonna meet with the other mayors in Wood Village and Fairview, possibly Gresham too. We get, we'll get together next Tuesday. But it's vital, if we want to make work, that Trauddale gets some assurances that we're gonna be offered reasonable terms for extension, further extension of the Gresham fire contract. And I'll want you, but I just want to make it clear, I'm all in favor of doing it that way for our own citizens' protection. We need to have some assurance, Gresham's really changed. This represents a sea change for Gresham, really. Until now, they haven't really been that interested. Staff studied it, they did a, they did a financial report to the council. There wasn't any political will expressed that I saw until today. And today was, yes, we're very interested in the idea, and we'd like to consider, well, more than that. With that, I, I just say, let's work on that hard. I certainly intend to. So I'll leave it with, have a happy Labor Day. Welcome back from a summer break that was for me a mixed bag, but anyway, it was, I'm glad to be back.
Welcome aboard, so far so good. Sorry if we were a little boring, not enough drama. I just wanted to plug for trip, the trauma intervention program. It's well represented by Trauddale. The head of it is June Vining, and husband's involved, Detective Greg Vining. Drew Standard and his wife Maxine, this, and it's only a fundraiser, but it's, it's good to get out and support it. It's one of those programs you hope you never need. So I'd rather be supporting it than actually needing it myself, so. If you can make it, Ray, if you can sign me up, me and my spouse. There you go. Yeah, if you can make it, it's worth, worth doing. With that, I move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned. I guess I should say, any opposed? Very none, we are adjourned.